Hello, America. And you know who I am. Our fellow meteors and in the office of the hall. We got what we love out with it. Drop the mess up there. You already done done enough to the White House on January sixth. He got us looking like Ben Black after the matter of destroying the, trying to destroy the White House. Now he trying to get away with it. They miss doing far. Talk about all I wanna do is walk out from his school and walk him home. And then after him, Mr. Polo in the, in the door stuck in the food, calling the dad. They trying to, and, and then I wanna take a mug shot, but they gonna be dealt with. And then America moving out.
Uh, in this business, we gotta be fair.
Oh, yeah, they gotta.
No?
There's no honor among thieves.
It's a nineteen degrees up in there. So I didn't know how to run the air conditioner. Yeah, yeah, talk about, I just like, um, another two doctors went in, stopped both, used the bathroom, done my act. And every stop was in your whole United States, went out of Vegas. And that's what they got to do to the doctors. And they, 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 they come to try to leave. They were like, oh, he's getting like, this is getting, anyway, they, uh, my friend, uh, moving up.
Some more.
Are you having a birthday?
Hey, I need some more fire help, man.
I have.
Oh, I have to catch it.
Yep.
You know the, uh, work is off the top of your head?
I don't, I'm sorry.
I thought I looked at it.
I'm on the board of Hattie. Yeah, 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 yeah.
But, um.
I saw your name.
Do you want me to locate this?
Yes, I gotta do it.
Do you want me to locate it?
No, not necessary, not necessary, I can handle that.
That's my first time up here in this space.
Nice. So what the fuck is going on? Bluetooth local network phones, loud switcher, all that, all that, all that. All that. All that. Uh, I can't tell her what to mean. There you go, there you go.
Thank you. This is for you.
I'm with him.
You look rested.
Does she just mean mudding?
I know, I couldn't tell.
Yeah, I know, y'all don't never tell when they do it. Nah, I said, she should be, uh, relaxed.
You are?
Yeah, I'm live.
You're not?
I am.
What?
I don't wanna talk like that.
I feel you. Shit, the camera's up there live. What she gonna do? Right.
Don't do that.
Is she okay? Is she coming back to us?
I don't know.
Also.
Hey, how you doing? All I want to say. I mean, at that moment, I had to second vote, he gonna say. Yeah, put my address out there on Facebook and stuff. Yeah. I know she just mean mudding once she came in. She, yeah, she gonna mean mudding. Boy, these politicians is terrible. Yeah. She think she got some power out of this world. Yeah, she need one. Sure did.
Well, I got a little stuck y'all in, I know you gonna come out.
Oh, yeah.
Real good, y'all was doing this, and she, that's alright, go around, you know, continue on.
Oh, for sure. For sure. Thank you. How you doing?
Alright, sir.
I can't reply.
You getting down on it, you ready for it today, huh?
Uh, I'm there every day, that's where I'm at.
That's where you spend your time?
Yeah, that's where I spend it at, this is my place of business.
What is going on?
Hey, ah, wait, wait, some go, hey, watch out, watch out. Hey. Oh, bell face, bell face, that's it, that mean, hey, don't look at him now, he gonna make you up. We taking his hair, see already, when you could've pissed it out, that's why you get here. Like you together, and like, that was well, well, well.
Yes, it is. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
See, that's why I dropped it, cuz I know you gonna fight.
Who was that? James. My respect. What the world? Let's see, so be. Man. No wonder they let me speak, I wasn't speaking, the people go, wait, they told me, no, you really have to be. I wasn't speaking, was, no, many years old, that day. I wasn't, I know, I'm called water dog in Mexico, in Mex- the Mexican church, the Mexican world there. I mean, uh, what the? I mean, I wasn't, I mean, that is that, oh, after that, I wasn't. No, I can't. Okay, I gotta, hey, there's somebody, stop, I gotta get two minutes, come back everywhere I go, I'll never be up. Get all on the way.
Regulations is residential city of Smith, that's the qualification. I go water bill, a.
The time is now.
Serious on your house.
As a special affairs committee is now part of order. Roll call out a clerk.
Stand up to your walls.
Mr. May. Ms. Lewis, present. Mr. Murphy is not in. Ms. Briskly is not in. Ms. Murphy Carter, present. Ms. Burns, present. Ms. Michelle, present. Mr. Fiker, present. Ms. Worthing is not in. You have six members present? We have six members, President. Any requests or changes in the ordinance of the agenda? Mr. May. Okay. Any more changes in the amendments? Mr. May. It looks like that's a typo, this is seventeen ninety-nine, but the title says sixteen hundred, but it's actually seventeen ninety-nine, which is in the body of the resolution.
If we did it out, we can change the direction point one. I want that resolution to change, um, as we do, uh, here, I want to add on resolution.
Okay, so you're saying that you want to add on, um, resolution number one to go with the record number two?
Yeah.
Any specific place with the record number two?
Add on the last resolution.
So now, clerk, this is a closed session, um, you, so go for it. The panel. Alright, any more changes to the? Okay, so, um, we're looking to, I would like to drop resolution two three zero three one zero without objection.
Let me wait and see what it is, what it is.
That is, um, our funding award, making an engagement impact on the pandemic on Biden, this is per administration.
I write here, just to test, I draw for objection.
And then. And then the last one is for, um, resolution two three zero three one two. And permit triple stack, the poke phone for your, poke phone to the executive committee. So, so. Resolution two three zero three one two, the second resolution.
Why does the executive?
So, the next session, please.
If you would, if I may, if this executive closed session proposed on this agenda for that.
One second, ma'am, clerk, they don't have any time to drive their own, clarify.
Um, two three zero three one two, um, just to be separated from the other, I guess, and then we post call back two seconds.
Both phones are done now, so we can just separate.
So, if I may. Would you stay on the, then, 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 question separation?
Correct, yes, that's correct. Alright. Alright, people, we have a couple of three. Any more changes? For addition to the, oh, and also, I would like to add, uh, ten minute special order for, um, our kids. And I would like for that to go with the possible right before the.
Right there. I have no objection to this ten minute special order, but I heard a discussion from this council about special orders coming at the end of the agenda. If you wanna request it at the end of the agenda, um, you know, based upon the council rules, I would have no objection, but you gotta move it around until we fix that rule. No objection.
Okay, so we will, right, what's the question? Alright, any more? Alright, so, we have ordered all of the additions to the agenda, and the agenda without objection. Mr. I. Oh, not wrong. Alright, so the chair will entertain a motion to vote in sequence for all proposed and then a change.
On the board.
Mr. May, follow.
That would only mean that was objective, you, you could order the rest without objection, you asked me to vote for, um, closed session. Those were objective, only two was objective.
Correct, so how long is this going on?
Eighty minutes.
Correct, so we just wanna vote one on one. Alright, so now we're going on the first closed session. Which is the second session for the waiting openers over local seventeen ninety-nine. We're voting to move this after we complete resolutions. Roll call, ma'am, ma'am.
Order.
I have no question. I'm for third. Um, is there a motion?
There, Madam Chair.
Mr. May.
Yeah, I need to get all of the Madam Chair to, I move that to closed session, go, I do resolution, so.
Alright, is there a second? May I check that, ma'am? Is the Muslim part of the second in mind, in mind? Mr.? Number four? Mr. May?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis? Yes. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Bracelet?
I have to say.
Ms. Murphy Carter? Yes. Ms. Barnes? Yes. Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Fiker?
No.
Ms. Worthing? No. We go to six yes, two no, one objection. We go to six yes, two no, one objection, the closed session for seventeen ninety-nine will be right upon, will be after the resolutions, after two papers, one page. The next one, um, the chair will entertain the motion for adding the closed session, panel number one, right after the closed session. In, right after the executive session.
Madam Chair.
Mr. May.
If I may make my motion, um, be add on number one, which we add to resolutions, whether it's postponed, acted on, or till after the closed session, we can do that at that time. My separation, and then, which they can say on whether they want to the resolution, and I so.
What she wants to have changed made with other changes, and then words about objection, nothing of objection.
She would order it to that.
To have that on her wants.
I attempted, I attempted to do both, so I just went ahead and just had a vote on one call, I'm just gonna sit the entire body here.
She didn't have to, that's what she did.
So, add on number one will be the last resolution. And then. I'm trying to be clear, this is what was the main proposal, she proposed that this add on number one, the last resolution, so. Is it accurate?
Madam Chair, I made a motion to add on to the resolution, just at, you know, you had, you had stated the motion that you wanted to, um, add after the executive session. I'm saying, my motion is to add to resolutions, if we have to go to the closed session, when we get to it, we can postpone that closed session, but the proper place for it is the resolutions. So, my motion was to add to resolutions, and I so.
So, the last resolution, add on number one, the last. Okay, is there a second, ma'am?
Order.
Alright, roll call, ma'am, ma'am.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Bracelet? Yes. Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle? Yes. Mr. Fiker? Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Close line, yes, you're not, add on, that add on number eight, at the end, number three. The chair will entertain, um, to drop resolution two three zero three one zero. Let me follow. Okay, any support? Alright, roll call, ma'am, ma'am.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Briskly? Yes. Ms. Murphy Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle? Yes. Mr. Fiker? Ms. Worthing?
Yes. Mr. May?
No.
Ms. Lewis? Yes. We go to six yes and three no? No, the six yes, three no, resolution two three zero three one zero have been dropped. So, that change of intention, the chair would like to entertain a motion to give our kids a ten minute special order. The chair will entertain a motion?
Requesting permission.
What's your question?
The motion is running through the place of that as well, correct?
Mm-hmm. So, at the end of the, right at the end of the, of the agenda, so we are looking at right before we almost at the second session. Manager. I need that one. Alright, any, any support? Supported by Ms. Jack. Alright, roll call, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Ms. Bracelet? No. Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yeah.
Ms. Michelle? Yes. Mr. Fiker?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
We go to seven yes, two no?
We go to seven yes, two no, alright, we have two minutes at the, right before we move to the executive session. Alright, so, going down to the agenda, close the second session, have the moves in the hand, now we're talking about public speaking. Any public speakers?
Yes, ma'am, from our, as for the record, uh, Madam Chair, not very close, uh, this September ninety ninety-one, we are, we are supposed to. Louis, uh, this September ninety-one-one, we are, we are supposed to play to the, pick up where we left off at, like, bit Latin, to hear me pack and take care, where we gonna take care of that truck, all of that messing up, and here in this room, who are messing up, washing, over this, uh, like, the opera money, we gotta take care of opera money, because September run out. If we don't take care of business, one of y'all guys could help us break up the bomb, we can take care of business tonight, but, I seen the brain bunches back already, voting six to two in all of it, you brainy bunches, generations, and, and the school teachers leading, leading the pack, okay, bring a pistol with her and all that, I mean, anyway, probably ain't welcome back. I start messing up, I can't call your name, you know what I'm talking about, the president was looking like Superman, Mark Twain. But anyway, like I said, and served for, and people be dissing the people, and they said the last time they saw the little brother fly, what, four years, fifteen, but I told you, fuck love, the lady, and they wrote me out, and said, look, look at this man, he's a truck driver, and look at you, you big fella, they come out on you, they want to mess with you, but he ain't even got a satchel, so they act like this, the goons who all got this satchel, people, and they make it, make it like, and bother, you don't know what the hell you are, don't know how you catch, catch, the people snatch and knock these and stuff like, like they get, the school teacher, the Superman, try to train us like they innocent and stuff, and tell, oh, you fuck the puppet, got some niggas out from back, like, he can't go back to white people and stuff, and y'all was like, oh, and, and a little blacky jerk, and a little boy, after the chair was gone, hurt nothing, over on the side of the street, and making, and a little boy, somebody standing there to fight him, make up, what y'all make up?
Mr. Mitchell.
Doug Matthews, fifteen twenty, Greenwood Avenue. Some claim Liddell Lewis is the big bad wolf, snatching candy from babies. They even want to suspend her from council for six months with no reliable evidence. I don't know Dr. Lewis personally, but I knew, I knew about sociologists and academics. Sociologists improve our society through their deep understanding of societal dynamics and community needs. Earning a PhD like Dr. Lewis demands years of advanced study and rigorous research, as well as impressive dedication. In the absence of reliable evidence, it's just not credible that someone so passionate about sociology and its demanding curriculum could possibly be the big bad wolf. Still, bad wolves are circling tonight, so I wrote a poem, and I call it Bad Wolves and Sociologists. Bad is on the one side, sociologists on the other, don't mix them up, they don't go together. Big bad wolves, accusations he hounds, skewing out theaters and posers he grows. But sociologists, dedicated and wise, improve our society with receptive disgust. Bad animal wolves, making unhelpful claims, they accuse with no evidence, playing mind games. But sociologists, dedicated and wise, improve our society, truth in their eyes. Big bad wolves have faced just always been cited, seeking clicks and cash payments, not doing what's right. But sociologists, dedicated and wise, improve our society with no hidden lies. Bad animal wolves, angel of stings, do hysterical claims and insecurity orders. But sociologists, dedicated and wise, improve our society or communities' rights. And sociologists don't keep it, it's clear word, ethics and purpose of the case.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any, uh, any, uh, next up a speaker, please.
To the presiding officer, and to the council people, so glad to see a full house tonight, in the big house. You that were not here last week, you missed the treat. We didn't have no pumpkin cookies for you, but you still missed the treat. The money. 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 Make people act funny. Money. Money. Make people make funny. I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. Well, first of all, I can tell you I twirl, rather than freeline, trail gal, two fourteen East Palos, here in the city of Flint. But I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of seeing ducks eat up the corn. Ducks eating up the corn, and we as citizens of Flint, taxpayers, we're not receiving our share. Even the UAW says taxation without representation is a terrible theory. So I'm asking you, I've been hearing to you, let's get our act together, we all here, you look a little bit, oh, this facility look good without taxpayers' money, but it's time for you all to stop playing games. Grow up, if you can't stand the heat in the kitchen, hit the road, Jack. They're losing money. Make you act funny, but we need our money, and it's time to take care of business, you are intelligent people, God bless you.
Next up a speaker.
My name is Claire P. Davis, and we've, uh, been out for petition for Liddell Lewis to be removed from office. So far, I'm holding three hundred petitions over what we need, and I'm so happy, and I'm coming to you, I don't need to keep a word.
Whoa! Next up a speaker, please.
My name is Officer Angela Polley, and I live in the ninth ward. I want to talk to you about resolution two three zero three one zero, which the administration has dropped, but since you are going to discuss it, I would like to offer my remarks, that is the resolution allocating funds to the neighborhood engagement hub for certain things that they did not apply for. I request that council reject this resolution unanimously, our reasons are as follows. First, the resolution proposes equality of expenditures among wards and non-activity. Everyone in the city knows that the need for neighborhood cleanups varies widely from neighborhood to neighborhood, and some wards have greater need for these services than others. Second, this proposal allocates only half of the one million two hundred thousand dollars allocated, council allocated to neighborhood cleanup in October of twenty twenty-two. There is no proposal to allocate remaining amounts. Third, the proposal allocates funds to the neighborhood engagement hub that exceeds the amount they apply for, and that are in addition to the projects they described in their several applications. They are assigned the task of neighborhood cleanup in wards one, three, six, and eight, without any description of the work to be accomplished. This could be unnecessary, probably is, because in response to the no fall, other community groups submitted applications that specified services to be omitted ward or citywide. Fourth, the council allocation in the revenue replacement category allocates fifty thousand dollars, ward priorities to each ward. This proposal suggests that in each ward, one-third of that allocation is to be spent on neighborhood cleanup, probably without consultation with council. That is enough reason to know there are more, please reject this proposal unanimously, thank you.
Next up a speaker, please.
Claire Clinton, second ward, I'm here tonight to talk on two issues. One is, we have asked, several members of the community have asked that council provide an additional sixteen million dollars for home rehabilitation and repair. That should have been one of the first things our money was spent on, and we are beyond, uh, concerned that Ashley Capital can come in here and get three point two, snap, 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 and we still wait, and you only gave a little more than that for rehab and rehabilitation for the whole city. That doesn't make any sense, and don't think we don't know that there's only one entity standing between, we the people and our money, one thing, Slant City Council, that's it. Not the mayor, not the nonprofit, none of them, it's you that's standing between us and our money, and we understand that. We understand that, so again, we need sixteen million, which is very marginal, sixteen million additional dollars, and another thing, we not gonna fall into the trap of getting one neighborhood of need to get to another. We all need help. We not saying this neighborhood shouldn't get, we saying we all need help. Now, the second thing, and I got the ten seconds, uh, Thursday night, there could be a major UAW strike in our community, and I hope that the council will step forward and support the workers of this community, thank you.
Next up a speaker. Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mitchell, there's no yelling out. And also, that goes to, for the rest of the audience, want to make sure that we have the control, so we can, um, hear our speaker. You only can speak when you have the floor, if you would like to speak, please utilize the lecture for public speaking, thank you.
All right. Uh, Ben and Harold, when they received their funds and they've been spent, I'm gonna repeat myself. Been spending over a year ago. Residency relief, that was a category that they gave money to, I'm not gonna say the dollar amount. Utility assistance, water, gas, and electric. Home improvements. Internet access, neighborhood improvement, vacant lot cleanup, alley cleanup, park safety improvement, block clubs, youth improvement cleanups, public safety works improvements, and a camera system. I ain't see nowhere they take care of nonprofits. Nowhere they take care of nonprofits. Been telling y'all, write a resolution up and help the people, all you doing is crying and crying. From day one, and it was when Eric May was saying again, when Eric May made the resolution to give the city of Slant employees five thousand dollars, all y'all excuses were thrown out of the window. I want to help the people, you don't want to help the people, 'cause you ain't wrote that to help the people. Change the labels on whatever y'all send approved to where you eliminate qualifications, and if you leave qualifications in there, resident of Slant with me, not a resident who water bill is paid up. Another matter of fact, to be very honest, because of the regulations,
And thank you, Mr. Jones. No.
I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this.
Thank you.
Go me out, if you want to, but I'm going to say this.
Thank you.
I'm going to say.
So, next up a speaker, please.
I'm going to say this.
This the next half, would you think this?
It's gonna come down, I'm going to say this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
When you use the word regulations, the people that need the help the most are the ones that not receiving, thank you.
Give him a warning first, exactly give him a warning.
Point of order. Point of order.
What is your point?
Yeah, that ain't how it work, you don't call the police, but escort him out, cause he went over, you give a warning, and it's a process, we can appeal your decision, so put it on, so we need to move on and let that go. Just be cool with the public.
So, per council rules, council does not have to allow, you're not allowed to wrap up.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What, what was the ruling?
My point of order is that when that clock tick, two minutes, if it's one, two, and three seconds over, and people talking and you interrupt, and whatever you decide to do, I will appeal it without win, lose, or draw, we need to move on, we, we all got sense of here.
Mr. May, that's in a proper court order, according to council rules, the council does not have to allow anyone to wrap up, including public, as well as council members. What is your point, Mr. May?
My point of order is a calling of a technicality, and it's not a minor tech, it's a major tech. When you get to arguing with the public and want to throw out almost arrested and removed, that's major. Now, if you want to read the rule, what a point of order is, I've been saying it for nine to ten years, you can talk out that mic to anybody you want, but when you talk to me, when you fool around with the public and try to get arrested, it ain't a minor breach, for me, it's a major breach, so when you.
Mr. May, your point of order is denied.
I appeal the rule of.
That's fine, there has been an appeal of the ruling of the chair for enforcing the council rules, any support? Back to that guy. I support. Not problem. So there has been an appeal of the ruling of the chair for highlighting the council rule we speaks, that council does not, audience of the council members, they're not afforded that opportunity to go over their time, so, Mr. May.
Madam Chair, my point of order is a legitimate point of order, it's not an illegal point of order. These people who come to these meetings and take their time, they don't know the rules like you and I do. They don't even know your pattern when you compare and contrast it to mine. When a speaker go over, and you calling the police on a public speaker, the people who vote for us, our bosses, I'm gonna take exception to that.
Please.
And I'm gonna call it point of order, it's not a minor breach, it's a major breach. We don't have to scare the public and fit the police on the public in a civilized meeting. The years he said, wrap up, wrap up, when Pastor Trail Tale went a few seconds over, he made, people don't have to be scared to come up here and speak and be intimidated and harassed by his chairperson. I don't care what the majority of this council do on this appeal, it takes five votes to overturn the ruling of the chair or eight in ten.
Please.
I'm gonna ask to request that you be more polite to these people, some of them ain't ever been here for vote, and that ain't how we want to operate in this house. And so I'm gonna ask you to be polite, and tell them to wrap up, now, uh, he did go a little over, but at the same time, soon as that clock tick, you interrupt.
Yes.
You didn't ask both come up, be a creep, point, snapping, they bang, all kind of stuff, and I done watched you, and I just missed me, I done watched you, depending on what people say, so whatever the majority of this council do on this appeal, I'm not gonna let you say fooling around with the public is a minor breach, it's major.
Um, so, um, for the record, Mr. May, please silence your cell phone, anyone else would like to speak?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Byrne?
When you are chairing, the whole vibe has just been completely off, you've been acting for the last two. It is a nice consideration to just say, hey, please wrap up. I've seen you do that with people that you want, and I've seen how you treat people who don't care for it. But you should not be weaponizing the police against. But you should not be weaponizing the police against residents. You should not be weaponizing the police against the residents. They waited, you, you almost twenty minutes late starting this meeting. People can't get that time back. So, when you talk about being fair and you want, you're not for these people. If people are here talking about our plans, the community needs help, you couldn't speak. They couldn't, you couldn't hear last week because you weren't here. They couldn't hear the week before that because you were absent. You're now here, he may want you to hear what he has to say. You're now here, don't weaponize the police. Don't do that, that's just not fair, that's not right to start a meeting. You move like a dictator, like a tyrant, it's terrible. You issue everyone's to anybody, anything except your own behavior. You do everything on time. So, you need to be fair, let that interview be positive. This meeting started off, you came in, you asked for two three zero, one zero, where you put in the status pocket to be dropped. Which was on that, when you put in your own organization to receive money. You ask these people who agree to have that drop, which should be discussed. So, you talking about what's fair, that wasn't fair. These people came, let me be polite, let's be respectful to them, and don't move like a tyrant. Be fair to these people. They're being fair, you no longer came in here to yell at you because you put Cyrus Parkin and get fifty thousand and didn't disclose it to anybody. You come this week and have point of order, point of order.
That is not true.
Well, we didn't, uh, we had...
That's correct. And you should warn yourself.
I'll warn myself.
Point, say what?
I'll, I'll warn myself.
Well, then...
I'll be like, Mr. Minchell.
Point of order.
What is your point?
That's your first warning, whiteboard, so then you listen to that, but escort it out of the meeting. So, you warning yourself, we gonna keep track of that.
So, so thank you, so thank you, Mr. Minchell. Yep, valid point. You are using a valid point of order, so definitely, I will warn myself. And so, uh, proceed, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. So, when you talk about being fair, you often have when you chair meetings of unruly and unawarded. Be fair to the audience, let them wrap up. Let them wrap up, it's been a long time, let it have a lot of prices, we have a pandemic. Let them wrap up, it doesn't take but a few seconds. It's just a few seconds just to tolerate, listen, and then move on. But when you got into this appeal, it's taking more time now to go to the field. It would've taken for him to have ten seconds or fifteen seconds to wrap up. And you do this every time. You don't want it to get into this, but then you try to make a point and now we're at two in the field 'cause you wanna go to audience out. Uh, and yeah, I know you watching my time, so you can tell me when I'm done. Let these people wrap up and let's be fair. They waited, you, you were late.
Anyone else like to speak on this speaker?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Word.
I really hope that this council remembers the corral and that we should stay germane to the subject at hand. Um, I heard a lot of words like tyrant and dictator. Um, I find that to be uh not good language in a professional meeting. I'm sure we can find other words to use to express displeasure. Um, but labeling someone a dictator and a tyrant over enforcing the rule is extreme. And I'm tired of extremism. Uh, it's extreme uh to take a ruling and then start screaming about it uh because you don't like it. It's in the rules. Ms. uh Lewis has stopped every single speaker in the last many meetings, I can't remember how many, when the bell or the time goes off, just to be fair. 'Cause some people wrap up for five minutes, some people wrap up for two seconds. Um, so, the wrap up wasn't being fair. So, I've noticed that she has just said when time is done, it's over. And that way, there's no discrepancy, it's time, bell goes off, no one says another word. I'm good with that. Um, it's in the rules and just to maintain order. Uh, so, when a speaker is told that they, their time is over, they should, they have another opportunity to speak, they can come back. Um, no one was recognizing the police, it was just to keep order. Um, he's still here, Mr. Metcalf is going to arrest him. Um, she just needed assistance in getting um him off the, off the podium. So, I would like us, again, to please remain professional. Uh, and, and let's just get this job done, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Word, anyone else like to speak, I love you.
Mr. Murphy. Is there a way to work that if someone is speaking, so say he did do two minutes at one forty-five, he doesn't... Anyway, he can set the bell to where the bell go off in advance. Two minutes, two minutes, and then they got fifteen seconds to wrap up.
Alright, let me think of your time.
Mr. Jones, come up here, uh, he been coming here for a long time, he knows his protocol. Speaking for the court, so he's not a rude uh person coming before the court.
Request, Mr. Minchell.
What is your request?
But through you, Mr. Murphy, the speaker, you and Ms. Liddell Lewis don't know. He been the one giving signatures on the recall, could that be a factor?
Mr. Minchell, let's not, real quick, Mr. Murphy, let's not utilize the floor.
Point of order.
What is your point?
My request is to the speaker, not to you. That's the rule. And so, you could get your second warning by answering my request for information to the speaker. You wanna give yourself your second warning for intervening in that? Or you need to...
Mr. Minchell, you cannot use the floor for privileged motion outside of what's against the...
Point of order.
What is your point?
I didn't use it to take the floor, I asked a legitimate question to the speaker and you didn't jump in and you out of order. I'm being nice, but if I appeal, that's your second warning. You gotta stay out of some of that.
Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. And uh, to answer your uh question to you, do you also know that uh Mr. Jones was one of the ones that's living in one of the homes that you poured out the eighteen homes that had not paid taxes in how many years? So, therefore, he's living in a house that you poured, they don't pay taxes on, and...
Request information.
So, when he come...
Request information.
What is your request?
Mr. Murphy, do you know it take five council votes to pull a house? I could do it then, Madam Chair.
Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
So, you asked a question, so I wanted to respond to you in the same question that you asked.
Request information.
You not know...
What is your request?
Did you really want me to answer the question about your accusation of me pulling a house? Or did you really want me not to answer it, that your comment that was false statement?
Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
You brought up a question about him uh going to recall, so I wanted to refresh your memory to make sure you remember that he really lived in a house that um that had taxes in because you poured one of them that house on eighteen...
Request that provision, that I'm gonna give you. My request is we pulled twelve to eighteen houses in a pilot project. So, you mad 'cause you didn't want it?
Mr. Mr. Minchell, Mr. Minchell, that is your warning for violation of twenty-six point two.
I'm gonna appeal the ruling of the chair.
That is fine, that is fine.
Your staff is asking...
Mr. Minchell, you don't have the floor.
Point of order.
Mr. Minchell, you don't have the floor.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Mr. Minchell.
Your staff is asking for a second, now that's the third violation. You should be out of this meeting.
Mr. Minchell, Mr. Minchell, you do not have the floor, you're getting my call.
Point of order, get the floor.
Your point of order.
Is that you bad ass is there...
Mr. Minchell, you do not have the floor. Mr. Minchell, you do not have the floor. So, as we go into the second...
Point of order.
What is your point?
When you don't recognize a point of order, you out of order. You keep telling me I don't have a point of order, Madam Chair, point of order, three to four times, all talking should cease. You should ask what's my point? My point was your job was to ask for that second to my appeal to get a warning. You have not done none of that. This would be your second time out of order, turning this meeting into chaos, and you should be out the door.
So, as we...
Point of order.
So, as Mr. Minchell, Mr. Minchell.
Point of order.
Point of order denied, so as we go into this...
Point of order denied, your staff is asking what's my point?
You are not saying it.
Point of order.
What is your point?
You are refusing immediately to give yourself your second warning and get out the door.
As we're proceeding to go into Mr. Minchell's second, because he, he called a point of order, he called the field on his first warning, we're getting there. So, is there a second to Mr. Minchell's appeal for him violating rule sixty, point six point two?
Madam Chair, second.
Alright, so, second, my... So, that second...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point?
You shouldn't take all expression and having to be...
Mr. Minchell, what is your point?
Point of order, would be my point of order. If you have caused this much chaos and stay out of order, and I have to keep telling you, you should add your second warning and should be out of the door. So, you was...
Point of order denied, Mr. Minchell, Trump won.
I feel that rule.
Is there a second to his appeal?
I, I support.
Okay. So, and your appeal is that...
You have reached order two, three times, won't give yourself a second warning trying to hold on to that chair, and you should already be out of the door because of chaos.
Yeah, second by... Okay, so, we're gonna go and head back to our first appeal. Anyone else who's speaking in the first appeal? Anyone speak on the first appeal?
Point of order, Mr. Murphy still has the blow up.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Um, so, my, 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 my point is, um, I understand the wrap up with the uh speaker, but his intention really wasn't to wrap up, in my opinion, it was to continue on with his statement just because his two minutes was up. Had he was just wrapping up because that's what he was trying to do, I, I'm down with it. And I'm down with if somebody, two minutes is past two minutes and okay, we give him a little five to ten seconds for his, in my opinion, it was intentional. And it's personal what, what is going on with this situation. I don't wanna get involved in it, um, but he, he been coming here long enough, he knows what two minutes is. Two minutes is two minutes. And it, I mean, it is what it is, unless y'all wanna change the rules and uh say people got thirty seconds to wrap up after two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, anyone else like to speak on this?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
This one's private.
Um, and, and Mr. Murphy, I hear what you're saying, but we can't, I mean, we all can't sit here and say that uh Mr. Jones's, um, you know, urge to finish what he was saying is personal. I don't think he was, I don't think he was being malicious or anything like that. But I do feel like the chair, um, and any chair should, should give the residents a chance to wrap up before the room be interrupted. You know, I mean, just, just give the residents latitude. The residents are the reason that you sit on your seat. And we, you know, we want them, we want them to engage in the process. No one should um feel threatened when they come to this um chamber. This chamber is for the residents. So, I mean, and I hear what everyone's saying, but the residents come to us. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this appeal? Anyone, who, Mr. Piper?
This is a uh, this is a joke. We are gonna waste an hour because of the twelve second wrap up. This is why, this is why there's uh YouTube or TikTok or whatever else is because of this right here. This is an hour that we're wasting with all of these um appeals and discussions for ten, twelve seconds of wrap up. I don't, I don't even know if this is a damn joke.
Yes, it was.
And Mr. Murphy, I hear what you're saying, I do, but he wasn't personally addressing, I mean, he's speaking about Harbaugh.
Yes, he was.
So, no, but he said he would be personal with him, but he wasn't addressing the council person. He was addressing us as a body, speaking of Harbaugh. So, whether or not we wanna, I mean, the clock and all of this chambers is new. If he was addressing us this way, he can't see those TVs. To know exactly where it's at. There isn't a TV right behind, right behind here. So, if he's truly in that letter, looking at us, and us looking at the people, the way that they want us to, to acknowledge them, they can't see that clock. They need a TV right behind these people. So, for us in our separate meeting to throw a gun or to throw the hammer down and uh, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily think that she ever said, come remove her from the meeting. She, she just wanted to bring order back. So, there's a conflict there, but to not have a twelve second wrap up and to have now an hour delay, disappointing. Quite high listening.
What about that, Mr. Speedo, sir?
Madam Chair, I just want to, um, because I know one of our colleagues that stated earlier that everybody is not familiar with the rules, right? Me being new, still familiarizing myself with the rules. So, all I wanna do is read twenty-nine point seven for everyone. Because y'all keep saying twenty-nine point whatever, twenty-six point whatever, but they are not sitting out there with the same tools that we have in our hands. So, twenty-nine, per council rule, twenty-nine point seven. Any person speaking at a council meeting may be called to order by the president or any council member for failure to be germane for vulgarity or for speaking in excess of the allotted time. So, take any consideration that the time is the time, and then also what Mr. Piper said of they do not have a screen before them. I'm, I'm not sure, I don't know what they're... Do you want a screen right there where you can see the time? Okay, so they do have to make your use of time. You can see it from the later, correct? Okay. So, I mean, and I, I, the one, the one thing that I will say with this is, um, well, we are asking people to wrap up. I definitely want us to be careful, um. I don't believe the police was weaponized, however, I do want us to be careful uh with how that looks and how that feels for someone that is frustrated and expressing themselves. I would also urge everyone to know that the time is the time. And I think the beautiful thing about this being special affairs is that Mr. Jones does have a chance to come up and speak during council. I don't recall hearing you say from uh Mr. Metcalf, to, for Officer Metcalf to put him out. But um, again, let's just, everybody be easy, the time is the time, and then also, let's not make the residents feel as though we do not wanna hear from them, but at the same time, everybody respect the time. Thank you. So, anyone else like to speak on the other?
Anyone else? So, with that being said, I'm the last one to speak. Unfortunately, some people call the way that I chair a dictatorship. But what I do do, I inform... But what I do do, I enforce the rules that were voted on by this body. This body voted to have public speaking being at two minutes. And after the two minutes, no one is allowed, including council, the time to wrap up after their allotted time to speak. So one time I did that, it was in the dome. People, they began to, Madam Chair, let me wrap up, I gave someone five seconds, that five seconds turned into thirty seconds. But see, the guy let the person wrap up. I was in violation of council rules on that day. And so I said that I would not afford people the opportunity to wrap up. It is all of our duties to pay attention to our time. When we're speaking, I have two minutes and twelve seconds left, I respect that. After my two minutes is off, I'm going to stop talking. And that is the rules. And so we encourage, and we want everyone to follow the rules, there are no respect of person. So unfortunately, we have colleagues to attack, to violate, rob a rule, that say that they are, um, that they know our, our motives, that's rob a rule was at four thirty. They must never attack or make any allusions of the motives of members. Unfortunately, this body does that, and we get off the track. We're not here to get off the track, that's why all of our speaking, our time, it is your responsibility to take a look at the clock and make sure you're within the boundaries. So our council rule says, public speaking is two minutes. If you're after two minutes, then you will be told that that is your time and you will be asked to have a seat. Unfortunately, Mr. Jones, he is a, a, a free winner of our meetings. He knows the rules. Mr. Jones invited me to have the police come up here and escort him because he was going to say what he wanted to say regardless. And so I didn't tell Metcalf to come and arrest him, we needed him removed from the lantern so we can have our next speaker. This is not a dictatorship. One thing that I do, I go by these rules that were voted on by your city council. If you don't have a problem with the two minutes and the no wrap up, please contact your local council person, so when it's time for the rules, they will understand. Because those that have a problem with the rules, they abstained and didn't vote for them. So I will be fair with everyone, if my mother hit the lantern, she's over two minutes, mom, sit down. That's the way this works. So with that being said, a yes vote will overturn the ruling of the chair, and a no vote will sustain the ruling of the chair. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. White, regarding.
Yes.
Ms. Burns? Yes. Ms. Michelle? No. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Breezeley?
No.
The vote is four, yes, five, no.
The vote is four, yes, five, no. That appeal died, so now we're moving on to the second appeal. The second appeal was Mr. May kept abusing requests for information. And so, Mr. May, you may speak on your appeal, oh, and he will issue the warning, Mr. May, you may speak.
I'm glad you said that, I appeal the warning. But you know, y'all can look and listen to me any way you want, but it's thousands of people living, and I want them to know. I want them to know that I want you to know. The Lord moves in certain ways. If these majority are be sticklers for the rules, when we get to the resolution to remove Ms. Lewis and Mr. Murphy, will they stick with the rules? That's gonna be the question. All of the folks that's up here that are sticklers for the rules, when it's twelve seconds, the Lord has laid the table. See, I don't mind getting the first warning and can't get by close for the majority overturn. But she had her second warning. If she did it by the majority who is sticklers for the rules, she would be gone from this meeting. If the rules say you can't take money, gifts, and bribe lords from people who you gotta vote seventy two million dollars for, that's what the child say, that's the bigger rule. Then the majority who are sticklers for these rules, and if you make the twelve seconds, and Mr. Jones, the warnings to me, should vote. Should vote to suspend him for six months, nine days. Remember, they sticklers for the rules. And the rules have not applied to me, to Rich Jones, they applied to Mr. Murphy and Lenea Lewis. We either took money, gifts, gratuities, and did recruit themselves from a vote for seventy two million dollars on a viewing project. It's called corruption. It could be turned over to the FBI. And here, they want to be sticklers for rules, but I will watch Candace Versat to be Breezeley, Eva Worthing, and the sticklers for the rules. I will watch Lenea Lewis and Quincy Murphy themselves. They call themselves knowing the alphabet, thirty days, boy, rule power. Now here we go. They just violated the rules. And the majority is voting publicly as it relates to that. The Lord moves in funny ways.
Anyone else want to speak on this appeal? Anyone? Mr. Piper?
Yeah, I don't know if this is, you know, I want to clean up these, uh, misinformation. We voted on three minutes, there's nothing about public speaking in two minutes in these rules. So we'll clean that up, correct? There's no two minutes for public speaking, we voted for three minutes, that's the only three minutes in this that we voted on. So we keep talking about voting for two minutes for public speaking, that is a false statement.
It's a faulty three.
Re-verse.
What is your point?
Mr. Piper, to the speaker, you telling me all this pussy was about two minutes, really should have been three minutes anyway, is that your point?
Madam Clerk. So this is for clarification. Then Mr. Piper, can you tell me something?
There's only one section that addresses public speaking, that is twenty nine. Twenty five. We have twenty nine point five, and it also addresses.
Point of order.
Twenty point three.
Point of order.
And, and what was the second?
Point of order.
Mr. Piper? What was your point?
My point of order is to you, he said what he had to say, are you doing a request for information, or what are you doing? Because we deal with this later, if the point is the point, this is the appeal on you giving me a warning. Did you do a request for information to Mr. Piper?
As the chair, I'm asking Mr. Piper a question. So what, so what was the second?
Point of order is called a request for information, you are sticklers for the rules. It ain't just cut you the chair, that mean the chair should be going to the next speaker for doing a request for information, but I'm gonna back off.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Piper, Mr. May, thank you. So this, for clarification, what you said, what was the second one that you said, the second one on?
So there's twenty nine point three and twenty nine point five, that's the fact of the public here is. But twenty nine point three is to bear the, uh, public here. There's no two minutes, no two minutes in the rules, it is council response to public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Piper.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns?
Yeah.
I have just a black helmet, it's going to fight the gun. Okay, I think he is correct, for the audience who have clarity, rule twenty nine point three states, members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comments, only one speaking opportunity per speaker. Numbered speakers list will be provided prior to the start of a meeting to go officially to speak during the portion of the agenda that speaks to when we're in council. City council members may not ask a member of the public at that time. May not speak to a member of the public at that time. Public speakers may not allocate or donate their allotted time to another person. Then onto rule twenty nine point five, it states, members of the public shall have no more than three minutes to address the city council during a public hearing. And it does not state anywhere about the two minutes in reference to Piper, except for council only has two minutes to respond. So that would make, Mr. Jones, who made the biggest three minutes? So, um, council, I think you were saying with the, the wrap up and through, uh, how people wrap up, and I would say this, former, uh, councilman Marty Stacey, always taught people wrap up, and it ran smoothly, when he would run his meetings, it just ran smoothly. Just let people wrap up and then get it out, you know, people been waiting for our, for everyone time. And here it is, he happens, and our chairs don't approve, we are. So affairs chair, it's not easy, it's not an easy task, but you have to rule with good people to impress. You want to get people to impress, because if we're gonna apply the rules and be stickler all the way across, this was a rule all over every single day, and include the council rules in charter. They might be broken, so we don't follow the rules, we don't follow the rules, but this council has not been following any rules. Not council, not following rules, this council does not. But as pertains to this, Mr. Rich Jones, for our council, we, and all the speakers would still have more time, two, two minutes left. So, you know, they would stop at three minutes, at two minutes, they would still have a minute left, um, and this is to be a learning experience for us, giving residents the grace and a wrap up with this second. And lots of the hours that turn, they got, they have three minutes, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, so, um, thank you, Ms. Burns, so what we are going for, then we can go forward now, Mr. Bronson, like, um, Madam Clerk, so per the rules, each person will have his three minutes, and it looks like it may be in order for us to address this at a later time. So. So, but, but where we are, we have moved past that, and we are going to appeal Mr. May, so we need for council people to stay remain on Mr. May's appeal. So right now, we are appealing, not the first one, but we are talking about Mr. May's abusing privileged motions, request for information. That's where we are. So, anyone else who would like to speak on that motion, on that appeal?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Burns, you already spoke. Ms. Michelle?
I, and I do have a question, this is absolutely.
What's your point? No, this one?
No, you're wrong, I didn't get to speak yet. Madam Chair, I have a question. Uh, but through you to the city clerk, and this is very germane, because his, um, the whole reason we are even asking the appeal, because we started talking about the time. Um, so to Madam Clerk, have they only been getting two minutes, or have they been getting three?
Two.
In committee, we say only getting your two minutes.
And can you speak on my favor?
The rule that you guys are referring to also says that the public can only speak during regular council meetings. So if you want to enforce this rule, that means the whole people speak at any committee meeting, it won't listen to the council meeting. So I think that this had come up before, because it wasn't in the rules when the rules were changed, and the council decided to keep the two minutes, it came up, and I think we voted on it during a meeting. It's not in the rules, because this came up before. But these rules say that a member of the public is to address the council meetings to have a regular council meeting, that's in the rules. So, I just want to point that out, so if we're gonna enforce that rule, that means they can't talk at any committee meeting, heck, I wouldn't prefer the rules. But this came up before, because this mistake was discovered before, and I can't talk to a holder to have the two minutes in this meeting.
Thank you.
Request for information. Through you, Madam Clerk, to the speaker, do you understand that in the open meeting that they have to be able to speak at every meeting?
So, I know because you walked away, you just came back, you weren't clear, that I was trying to be clear, you know how much time they had, so I'm gonna give you some clarity since you walked away and just came back. I'm simply trying to find out, I'm simply trying to find out how much time.
So, what is your request?
Ms. Michelle, my request for information is what I heard the clerk tell you when I was here, they have to be able to speak at every meeting, that was my point, to ignore it or.
Your, your request for information is not for me?
With Mr. May, that will again invalidate request for information. So, we want to go ahead, Ms. Michelle, please proceed.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out one, now that we're at the point where the city clerk is saying they should not even be speaking during a committee, or that it was voted on at some point in time before it got here, that they should only have two minutes to speak, uh, and, and during committee, is that correct through you, to Madam Chair?
I mean, Madam Clerk?
I mean, Madam Clerk, sorry, yes.
Two minutes for all committees, all of the committees, including special affairs.
I can't hear you.
Two minutes for all committees, including special affairs.
Okay, so then the voted upon rule was for two minutes, for all committees, including special affairs that we're in right now?
When it was just, this came up in front of me, and when it was discovered, it was just kept on the agendas at two minutes. Um, so this could be corrected at a later date, and this set of rules was postponed, so that it couldn't be addressed until next January. So changes couldn't be made, so it was kept on two minutes every committee for the public.
Okay, so then again, um, to you, Madam Clerk, this rule that we're reading now about the three minutes does not apply to what we're talking about with the two minutes in committee, because we're in special affairs right now, correct? Yes?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, alright, so anyone else who would like to speak on, on the air, Madam Chair?
Um, so you asked me on the city attorney, um, could you clarify the, um, public speaking that's on, that's on paper for a committee? Is it about, from the rules or per charge?
Point of order.
And what is your point?
Madam Chair, really, in relation to me, this discussion on these minutes is not germane to me, get the warning for illegitimate request for information to clarify something for a point of order. This ain't the appeal on how many minutes, so really, you letting this get out of hand, and let it get out of hand, and y'all are penalizing me for not being germane. This ain't about the minutes of speaking, this is about me appealing whether or not I did the deal with request for information to clarify something. I'm gonna say that, but if you want me to understand it, you're not.
Thank you, Mr. May, point of information is, um, gladly taken, so again, point of order, thank you, so, again, I'm asking colleagues to stay remain, uh, Mr. May's appeal, twenty six point two, him violating the request for information, he felt interrupted, Mr. Murphy, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Well, uh, my colleague first wore, um, things to all of them, interrupt me when what I'm saying is not germane, or, um, not what he wants, so he can throw the rocks, but he can't catch the rocks, and something's gone back at him. He, he originally started off talking about, um, a recall with Dr. Lewis that had nothing to do with the subject matter. But then when I came back on him and talked about the speaker and what he done, done for somebody personally behind, told. But then when I came back on him and talked about the speaker and what he done for somebody personally behind closed doors, and while he's, um, loyal to him, you know, now he wanna request for information. But it's okay for you to, um, stop somebody, to interrupt somebody, when they saying stuff that you don't, um, agree with. But when we talking, and as long as it's aligned up or what you do, you can't have it both ways. If you can't throw no rocks at me, and they can get thrown back at you, and it can be okay. And that's your problem. When you take request for information, and request for information, and you turn around, and you use your personal information to, um, gather the floor, so that you can move and say what you want to, to stop people from continuing on with my thought pattern, because I'm saying stuff that you ain't, you don't agree with. Well, give you the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else like to speak on this appeal? Okay, seeing that there is no one else to speak on this appeal, I'll be the last one. According to Rule twenty-six point two, twenty-six point two reads. Well, I'll start with twenty-six point one. A request for information requests information from a member holding the floor. Twenty-six point two, its purpose is to help the member making the request for information understand the process and potential consequences of the next call. A request for information that asks a question for which the requester already knows the answer is improper. Unfortunately, Mr. Mays got the floor over five times, making improper request for information. Therefore, the chair issued Mr. Mays his first warning. If you would like to overturn the ruling of the chair, vote yes. But in order to sustain the ruling of the chair, vote no. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Piper?
I understand.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Yes.
Look on this three, um, yes, five, no, one extension.
So that's that appeal. Mr. Mays has his first warning. So the next, um, one order that we had was, um, Mr. Mays said the chair should be thrown out of the meeting for breaching order and for promoting chaos. Mr. Chair, Mr. Mays, that's one.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the rule is clear. When you hit a certain point of order, all of the people should please, and you should ask the person who called a point of order, what is your point? It ain't no scold, it's nobody, it's clear cut. Point of order, the chair should say, what's your point? And take it from there. You didn't do that. When I appeal the ruling of the chair, the rule is clear. You should immediately ask if there are seconds to the appeal. You should, and it's clear as record. And so I appeal it because you gave yourself your first warning. When you act out of order repeatedly, you should get a second warning and should be gone. And so you are ordered. And it's very important for me to demonstrate to this community how people vote and act in clicks. They don't care too much about, y'all don't care too much about these rules. You care about click. And see, the five number click out of nine makes you the vice president, makes Priestley the finance chair. And I don't know what Candace Massey trying to be. Maybe she trying to be the president, the vice, because they voting clicks. They not voting on the rules. All of that poppy talk about two and three minutes wasn't germane to me doing a point of information. When you read every group of point of information, she said, if I know the answer, it's illegal. If I do a request for information, I don't know what's in their brain. I don't know the answer. But I got the right to ask a request for information to clarify something. And I clarified that Rich Jones been giving petitions against your partner, Mr. Murphy. And I made a point that if the majority take a vote of office to live up to these rules, fine, I'll take a warning. I'll take thirty days off, but guess what? Is they gonna do that to themselves? Because the city charter is bigger than the rules. You shouldn't take life, life force, gifts, gratuities, and then vote on a second two million dollar appeal. So it's gonna be very interesting, Ms. Michelle.
So, um, just for the record, you are in violation of these other law. You are violating. Those statements are in violation of Roberts Rule four thirty, which talks about the illusion of motive and other members. So, that's not appropriate.
I appeal the rule that the chair interrupted me, saying what I'm saying, and whatever they're approaching. She interrupted me, bro. I'm gonna feel that God brought that in. This will be your third or fourth warning.
Is there a second to that game?
Yes, I support that appeal.
I should have twelve seconds. Remember, we sticklers the time when she interrupted me. I should have twelve seconds to try to arrest and say what I'm saying. But if I do it at nine, you can get me for being over the time, for y'all sticklers. Y'all took off the office to live up to the rules. Ms. Lewis, it's getting to you, that y'all are broke, a big as money, corruption. You could need letting finish in nine seconds, interrupting me trying to protect yourself. I wanna see what Worthing, Priestley, and Massey don't do.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Worthing?
I don't know, I'm a little sensitive. I don't know how to work, but. Um, man, it's been almost two hours now. Um, nothing has gotten done. Some of my colleagues are happy with that, because they're supporting these appeals. I would like to see.
What is your point?
Your rise is true, that you keep stating Rule forty-three point twenty-one. Can you warn your colleague about the motives of staying up comments, don't leave your life alone? Please warn her.
From the council member who called you a dictator in the tirade?
So, what is your point?
Are you putting a rule on Rule forty-three point twenty-one here?
Forty-three point one?
That's a rule, if you're talking about standing on task, the motives of your colleague, that we're supposed to stick with, stay domain. You quoted about me two minutes ago. Can you please warn your colleague?
So she stated that you all support the appeal?
No, no, Madam Chair, what she said was, it seems like the colleagues are happy. How does she know what makes me happy? So he doesn't look happy, he's not happy.
Um, yeah, I have a problem with the council member who's constantly not germane, constantly accusing other colleagues of something, constantly, uh, causing disruption. Uh, but yet can't handle that one comment. Um, you are supporting the appeals, and, um, it's wasting our time. There are people here who wanna see us pass dollars for ARPA funds, uh, pregnant women, you name it. And yet, here we are. If they're not frustrated, I can't believe it, because I would not come to a meeting, I mean, some aren't here for TikTok fame. But this is a professional meeting. We shouldn't be giving them what they want. We should be giving them the city business getting done.
Excuse me, Mr. Mitchell, that's your warning. Stop yelling out. You're out of order. So, that is your warning. So, what is your point?
When Ms. Murphy said what she said, you had people clapping or applauding her on this side of the room and that side. Mr. Mitchell said like an amen in church. It was nobody had the floor. Let the audience clap, boo, or whatever, until the speaker get the floor. Don't interrupt folks and give them warnings, 'cause they clapping, they got the right to clap, they got the right to boo. Ain't that a little much?
According to Roberts Rule forty-three point two, when you're yelling out loudly, and you are disrupting the meeting like Mr. Mitchell have been doing this meeting, that is Mr. Mitchell's first warning. If you yell out, this is for all council members, including audience members, you cannot verbally yell out and interrupt the council members. That's not acceptable. So, with that being said, anyone else would like to speak on this?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns?
The audience, everyone that's been speaking now, we would gather all about twenty, you should have about twenty warnings for the audience. Let them, if they sitting in, if they sitting for our order, and this appeal, we are literally, and this is the truth, and I'm not gonna take it too much. Six fifteen, you started the meeting almost twenty minutes late. You were late starting the meeting. So therefore, now we're getting into this. Let's come stuff though. We know that the community takes care of it, and you are warning our end. He's not yelling once. At the same time, you have five other people saying, we gotta warn. You did not warn them. You did not.
Take that.
You are a barrel of rules, and if I can hear it, I know you can hear it. I know you can. So let's just pull back, get the meeting on, let it be.